Okay, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall, I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager, and in typical fashion, we're going to give a quick summary of this evening's meeting, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So tonight is a workshop session of the Board. This typically is a meeting during which the Board considers items and discusses those items in a more deliberative fashion. Of course, this evening, we have a number of presentations to the Board, including a presentation by a Boy Scout of Troop 23 in pursuit of his communications badge, followed by several presentations on the topic of the Dauphin County Local Share Gaming Grant requests. Following this, the Board will hear a, actually take action on Resolution 22-20, which pertains to the township's swap termination, a bond action item. Following that, the Board will then take action on improvement guarantees, followed by any last announcements, and finally taking a motion to adjourn the meeting. With all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. We'll call this meeting of the Lower Paxton Board as Supervisors to Order. If everyone would please rise, Supervisor Navarro will lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now is the time set aside for public comment. Public comment is for any item not on the agenda tonight. If you are here to speak to an item that's on the agenda, we'll have public comment on that item at that time. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda this evening? I'd also like to announce the Board did meet in executive session, although we really didn't discuss anything other than a park's logo, so, and we'll do so afterwards. And Carter? Where's Carter? Apparently not. Well, we have a Boy Scout, Carter Mylesic, who is working on a communications badge, and he was here last week. He was going to come back either this week or perhaps next week to make a presentation to us. So that being said, I don't see Carter, and we will then move on to the next item. If he comes in, we'll circle back to that and have him come up and talk to us a bit about his communications badge. Tonight, our main item of business is gaming grant presentations. The County of Dauphin awards each year a number of gaming grants. They're grants from gaming revenue from the casino that flow into the county. The process is that those grant applications come to the township, and then we have to put our stamp of approval on them and then send them on to the county. The county ultimately makes the final decision on whether or not the grants are awarded. So we have a number of organizations that are with us this evening who want to tell us a little bit about their grant proposals, and I would like to ask each of you, when called upon, if you would please come to the podium, give us your name, address, and the organization that you are with, and we will hear what you have to say about your grant and why you were seeking funding from the county. So with that, we'll begin with Dauphin County Shared Grant Application from the Township Police Department. And Director Kishiba, I can see you there. You really don't need to tell us who you are. Good to see you again, Director.
Good evening, Chairman of Board, members of the Board. So I'm here before you today to hopefully seek your approval and give us a decent rating in the Police Department for a project in the terms of some debt reduction. In 2020, the Lower Paxton Township Bureau of Police applied for and was awarded $128,387 as a result of an application for a body worn camera project with a mobile video recorder project that allowed those two cameras, the camera that is worn on the police officer's body and the car, to integrate with one another and capture the work of our police officers and assist us in numerous things along the lines of evidence collection, testimony, and other things of that nature. Again, 60 body worn cameras were received in that grant, 15 mobile video recorders, a server, and some redaction software for those. If the Board were to approve and support our application for the debt reduction in the way of $206,875.25, obviously, this would award the township the ability to use those funds that would eventually get us to the point of having a zero balance on such a loan that you could utilize those for many other reasons. Of course, the Police Department always has reasons to buy things, but you could use that for any number of reasons, and we ask your support in that project for us.
Board members, any questions for Director? Okay, hearing none. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our second presentation is also from the township, this having to do with the Brightville Park Playground.
And I'll just want to note real quick, Mr. Chairman, the reason we don't have a lot of questions, or any questions, for the Public Safety Director is the body worn cameras is a long-running project that has come before us many, many times, so a lot of the questions were already answered.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Rachel.
Today, I present to you the Brightville Park Playground Renovation Grant Request. The playground renovation is part of the park revitalization plan that is currently taking place. In 2022, we have replaced the Brightville basketball courts, and we are now in the process of replacing the main restrooms and storage facility that serves the majority of the park attendees. In 2023, we are planning to install a half-mile paved path around the perimeter of Brightville Park. In addition to these improvements, we are looking to renovate the existing playground. The current playground was installed 20 years ago, and the typical lifespan is 15 to 20 years. The Brightville Playground is situated along a wooded path in the park, which led to the inspiration of installing an enchanted treehouse playground. The structure will be built for 2- to 12-year-olds utilizing ramps, activity boards, climbing features, and twisting slides. Children will be able to enjoy musical instruments at the sound garden, and there will be swings of all abilities for belt swings, bucket seats, connection seats, and ADA seats. Additionally, we are looking to use a pour-in-place material, making it accessible for wheelchairs, walkers, and strollers. This playground will be a family favorite. We host a majority of our special events here, as well as the Brightville Basketball League, and host a numerous amount of pavilion rentals. We are requesting for an application of $150,000 for this grant.
Questions, Board members?
So, yeah, we've done, so, basketball courts?
They're done.
And then you said restrooms and storage?
Correct. That should be in the fall.
That should be in the fall, and then this would be the next.
Correct.
Okay, and we're trying through different means to really upgrade our parks through another initiative and then any funding that we can get, so this is part of a greater initiative that we're taking for some long overdue upgrades.
Correct. We're looking to apply through three grants for this project, just to expand the money that we have.
And the parks improvement project will touch upon every park in Lower Paxton Township before it's done. We can also point out that what August, I believe, is when Phase III of He Rose Grove will
Correct.
construction will begin, that'll be done by winter, and then He Rose Grove will be completed.
Correct. They'll have restroom facility and a welcome center there.
Yes. Great progress.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good. Okay, thank you, Rachel. We now have our Public Works Department wishes to make a presentation on a grant request for fuel tank replacement at the Transportation and Maintenance Center. Good evening, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Our project includes the replacement of the fuel tanks at the township's Public Works facility. These underground storage tanks provide fuel to the township's Police Department, as well as Public Works, Sewer, Parks and Rec, Community Development, and Administration. It also provides fuel to the three fire departments, the South Central EMS, the Senior Van Service, and Dauphin County Technical School. Typical lifespan of underground storage facility like this is about 25 to 30 years. These two tanks at Public Works were installed in or around 1987, so it puts it past the useful life for the facility. So as with any aging asset, we continue to see an increased maintenance cost, ongoing maintenance. You can see in the third picture, or no, if you go up to that one here, so where the traffic drum is, this, you can see some of the cracking in the surface concrete, so what we're seeing is settlement of this concrete leading to water infiltration into the subsurface tank components. As recently as 2020, we noticed that, or staff noticed, that the diesel fuel was not the typical color and had to have a specialized contractor come out to flush, clean all the components of the tank, and then recondition the fuel, removing the water. So each time we perform maintenance on this facility, it's a significant cost. It's not that we can have our workforce go out and do it, these are specialized contractors, which comes at a significant cost. So in closing, our project, the benefits of our project are really twofold. We have the continued convenience of a fleet fueling station on our campus out at Public Works, and we also do see a cost savings from purchasing fuel in bulk rather than having staff go to convenience stores and fill up using that method. So with that, I can answer any questions that the Board may have.
Gentlemen?
So all of our salt trucks and everything, they all fill up here as well?
Yeah, yeah, all township fleet fills up there.
Certainly, anything that saves on fuel costs at the moment is
Yeah, especially right now.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And next on the list, the Lower Paxton Historical Commission has a project that they would like a grant for at the Wenrick Cemetery. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm David Doyle, I'm the Chairman of the Lower Paxton Historical Commission. The township itself has really the luxury, the benefit of having several extremely historical cemeteries within our location, and one of these has a story behind it, which would be at Wenrick Cemetery, and that's what the project is that we're discussing tonight. Wenrick Cemetery is on the property of St. Thomas Church, and in the late 1700s up until the mid 1800s, there were slaves that were buried there, but they were not giving any respect. And that, and we feel that part of the property that's wooded is actually where the slaves were buried, and if not, if you can go up a few, right there, if not, just, there were three churches that were there originally. The church that's currently sitting there, that's the third church. The second church, which was located about the middle of where the cemetery is, and then the first church, which was west of the whole property. The second church had, went until about 1850, and it stated that anybody of color or anybody that was not with respect to, wasn't involved with the church, was buried outside the fence. And what we want to do is, we feel that everything that was west of that church, which would be this wooded area and those newer stones that you see, we feel that that's where the people were buried. And we know for a fact that where some of the new stones are, were buried on top of other people, and we feel that might have been part of the slaves. So what we want to do, what our grant request would be asking for, is money that we can go in and start to clear the brush away and take down the undesirable trees. Once we have that, we're working in conjunction with Stephen Berg, a professor at Shippensburg University, and as long as he's acceptable to our attack plan, he can most likely get us access to ground penetrating radar. At that point in time, we would like to do three things with it. One, look at the second church to try to determine exactly where the foundation was, so we know, we can say where outside the fence might have been. Two, go over those stones that were, the newer stones that we, that the church has told us people were buried on top of. And three, once the wooded area is cleared out, go in and see whether or not we can determine anywhere where possibly a slave grave might have been. In the final end of this, what we want to do is, in that wooded area, have that cleared, make it more like a hallowed ground with respect, with a stone monument, and part of the, part of this $10,000, $4,000 of that would go towards the stone. And just give it an area and give the respect, knowing that we'll never be able to identify who the slaves were, or exactly possibly where they were, but give them respect for the, as anybody should have in that area. And finally, with that, we've received some grant money from the Rotary Club, and we've also had some suggestions that the congregation of the church would be very acceptable to funding our project. We're working a lot with volunteers to clear the property. Matter of fact, I was on site yesterday, and we were going to try to, or try to tag some trees to be taken down, and we know that we're going to need some professional help because of the way that they're leaning towards the cemetery, but I'd be willing to take any questions on any of that.
So, this is really interesting. Do we know for sure that this even exists? It's, to what extent, and obviously, you're going to find out a lot once you clear it.
We've been doing some research.
I guess, is there a chance that you'll go in there, clear everything, use the radar, and maybe find that, oh, we, there is no, there is no other burials here?
Well, even, even after it's cleared and they use the ground penetrating radar, just because we're talking close to 200 years, there may, and there are so many disturbances to that ground that nothing might be conclusive. However, we have church records that state that slaves were buried, and we know that they weren't buried to the eastern side of the cemetery, because that was church members and, quite honestly, all Caucasian church members.
It was segregated, so we know they're there somewhere.
Correct.
Okay. Well, this is fascinating. I appreciate you for, everybody involved for doing this.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your time, and the Commission for all the time you're putting into this and many other projects. Our next presentation is the Pennsylvania Council of Churches, Pennsylvania United Church Center Roof Replacement Project. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening, and thank you to the Council for hearing us this evening, and I owe an apology because our Executive Director, Larry Pickens, was, he tested positive for COVID this morning, so he would be here otherwise. But anyway, my name is Sandy Strauss, I'm Director of Advocacy and Ecumenical Outreach for the Council. Just a little background on the Council, we were founded in 1911, we're the oldest council of churches in the country, and the United Church Center that we occupy and lease out to others was built in 1962, right here in the township, at the corner of Arlington and Londonderry, so very close to the hospital, to St. Mark's Lutheran Church, and so on. And we have provided a safe, convenient, and affordable home for other nonprofit organizations in the area for many years as well. Just briefly, we are, we are a statewide organization, but we do a lot of ecumenical work, both here, probably more here than anywhere else because we're here, but throughout the state, we do the State Park Chaplaincy Program, we have migrant ministries that we work with, trucker traveler ministry, advocacy on behalf of vulnerable persons, and as I said, we provide a safe and affordable space for nonprofits in the state. We also would like to become a greater resource to the community. We are under different management these days, and it is our desire to work much more closely with the township to see what we can do jointly that would be helpful to both of us, frankly. What we're asking is support from the township for a, for funds to provide for a new roof for the Council, so we can continue our work. Lot of the, the work that we do is not the most, let's see, it doesn't generate as much revenue as we would like, as, it's true for many nonprofits, and of course, the pandemic has not helped. We've been dealing with some bad weather and aging building, we fall and prey to the same things that anyone in any aging building would. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague here, Debbie Maglietta, to talk a little bit more about the roof itself.
Hi, I'm Debbie Maglietta, I'm the Facilities Manager for the Council. Some of the things that have happened, like Sandy had stated, is that the building, being as old as it is, has not had any really major repair work done to it. The roof is, we're asking for $410,000 to replace the roof on the building because there's several leaks and it's starting to deteriorate on the inside of the building to the different rooms that individuals are renting from us. We have an ability to go ahead with the same roofing company to do repair work, which is much less, but there's no guarantee with that, and that's just a stopgap for maybe a year. There would be no, and with the replacement of the roof, we would get a 20-year guarantee, two-year guarantee on the workmanship, two years of complimentary roofing inspection, and it would end the leaks on the inside of the building completely, so that I could do other repair work that would be necessary to keep the building going, as it was slated to be in 1961, it was a state-of-the-art building, but unfortunately, things, you know, this many years later. We're looking at exploring other resources also, we're trying to conduct a campaign to try and come up with $50,000 for ourselves to go ahead and help with this in case there's other costs. The $410,000 is what they find right now to repair the roof, but in case when they start peeling back the ballast and the metal and insulation that's there, there may be other costs associated with that, so we're trying to fund the additional money just to be a stopgap for that reason. We're exploring existing resources to be tapped from our donor groups that we've had before, and we're also looking at getting a line of credit for, against the, backed by the value of the facility. Is there any questions?
Gentlemen, do we have any questions? I think you've explained it very thoroughly.
Thank you.
Good team approach, thank you. Okay, next, the Paxtonia Athletic Association, a grant request for Zack's Clubhouse.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity for Paxtonia Athletic Association to present here tonight our request for a local share gaming grant. Can you go to the next slide, please? So my name's Dave Ondesco, I'm the President of Paxtonia Athletic Association, I've been involved for about 10 years, this is my third year as President, and can you go to the next slide? I want to talk a little bit about our organization. I recognize some faces in here, younger faces that were at some point in time part of our organization, so we pride ourselves in being the premier baseball and softball association in our area, because we focus on developing our youth's talents, giving them a fun experience and the ability to learn, to be what's part of the team, and just giving them a generally great experience. Quite honestly, after I'm done here, I'm headed to the fields because there's stuff still going on. This is a very busy time of the year for me, but living here in the Paxtonia area, Lower Paxton Township, we really don't have a town center, and for about eight weeks out of the year, that becomes our town center. That's a social spot for our youths, our family, and just a great place to be. End of next year, whenever my son is finally out of that, it's going to be a very sad day for me. But what we want to do here tonight is talk a little bit about preserving legacy and leaving the grounds there at Paxtonia across the street from the nice medical center in, right there in Paxtonia, with the additional Zack's Clubhouse, as well as some additional improvements for the Association. I'm joined here by Mr. Mike Kajowski, and he's going to talk a little bit about Zack's Clubhouse. What we're here to ask for is your sponsorship to obtain $75,000 in grant money to help with Zack's Clubhouse, as well as the betterment of our facility. So alternative to Mr. Kajowski, and he can take it from here.
Thank you, Dave. If you'd advance the slide, please. Hi, my name is Mike Kajowski, and as Mr. Ondesco said, one of the things we're doing here as part of this grant is the construction of an indoor batting facility, and it'll be an indoor climate-controlled facility, and it's going to be built, I'm having it built in honor of my son Zack, who was killed in a car crash back in January of 2021. Many of you, you've probably heard of it, there were three young men that were killed behind a rugis here, a single-vehicle crash, and Zack was a big baseball guy, and I thought that this would be an appropriate tribute to him, but as well as, you know, assisting and assisting the youth and future generations of our youth, as far as being able to practice baseball year-round. You can see there, there's a picture that was recently taken a few weeks ago, and we started construction of the building a while back, but that's where it's at right now, and what you're looking at there is the building as it sits behind the centerfield fence at the Paxtonia Major League Field. So you can advance it, please. There's the inside of the clubhouse, I'll show you briefly here, just to give you an idea. Obviously, that was a few months ago, a little bit of snow there, but again, it gives you an idea of the garage door there, as well as the single entrance way, but that's pretty much how the interior looks today. We're about halfway through the project. If you advance it. Little bit about Zack. Zack was big in Paxtonia baseball. He was either on the left-hand side, growing up, played Little League at Paxtonia. Played, was actually with the Senators, he was a bat boy with the Senators for several years, stayed with the Senators throughout his high school and college years, and actually went up as a clubhouse attendant, was with them, and also attended University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg, where he graduated with a degree in business management. So Zack started his baseball career with Paxtonia, again, with the Senators as a bat boy, clubhouse attendant throughout his college years. You can see a picture, that's a picture of Zack on the right, a couple months before the crash. He was scheduled to start work, actually with the Washington Nationals, he was, got an entry-level position, his goal was to work his way up through and work with management with the Nationals, and he got an entry-level position in doing that. Unfortunately, that Unfortunately, that came about right before the pandemic, and it was delayed. So after graduating college, he had another year to go in the delay. He was scheduled to start in April of '21, and on January 9th of '21 is when he was killed in the crash. So you could see, you know, baseball is a big part of his life, and I actually coached him as he got older through, he played teenager ball at Paxton, he also played travel ball with Central Penn Renegades. Advance, please. Why the Indoor Batting Cage? Again, it's a fitting tribute to Zach. He loved to watch him play the game. On a, kind of a selfish level for me, it creates a presence that sits there in the field, it's a reminder of him to his family and friends. And I have up there in quotes called "advil." One of the things that you, at least that I experienced when you go through this, is, you know, it's a pain that never goes away, but there's things that my wife and I refer to as "advil," which kind of temporarily dulls the pain, and this is a big piece of advil, because it helps occupy us. And it's doubly important, because it occupies us, it's a tribute to him, but then, most of all, it's also, has a big positive impact on the community. Example, to take something good from bad, and also savings from higher costs using facilities outside of Paxtonia. Right now, Paxtonia Athletic Association has to go to other facilities to do things as far as in the wintertime, evaluating players, things of that nature. This is unique to the county. The only one I could find that was comparable to this, that was associated with a Little League organization, was up in Skulko Haven, up in Skulko County, PA. So this is a unique countywide project that I'm aware of, and, you know, again, it'll be right here, right here in Lower Paxton Township. It upgrades existing facilities, as Mr. Von Desco said, as far as expanding. It provides year-round baseball and softball to boys and girls in a community, so now they'll be able to practice their skills in the winter months, and it, again, it has positive impact for youth, for generations to come. Real quick about the building, it's a Pioneer Pole Building, was the construct, they constructed the shell. It's 60 long by 40 wide by 14 high. It's heated and insulated. It'll have two retractable batting cages. Batting cages themselves will be approximately 12 by 50 feet. One pitching utility lane, green carpet turf for the flooring. It'll have some indoor seating. Several small details will be reminders of Zach, colors inside, seats, the interior, et cetera. And then there's a legal agreement that we're drawing up with Central Dolphin School District because it's on their property. That just gives you an overview, just a brief schematic there of what it'll look like on the inside, garage door and entry door in the lower, pitching lane on the left, and the two batting cages on the right-hand side. We've already had a fundraiser, the wall facing centerfield of the major field will be all brick. Some of those bricks, as demonstrated on the bottom line there, we use as a fundraiser. Several people in the community bought those as a fundraiser to help fund the project. There was a story on ABC 27 News, I was going to provide the link, but it's four or five minutes long. But again, if you just, anybody interested in that, you look at ABC 27 News, you go to their website and just do an indoor batting cage search, and it gives a nice story on it, too. Those are our costs to date listed there. Some of those, again, I have asterisks there that we used outside of our funds, but again, that gives you a pretty accurate total of what we have paid for to date. Most of the labor was donated. It turned out that many of Zach's friends' families are in the construction-type business, and it's amazing, once we got this going, how many were able to contribute their generosity in helping this go forward. So again, we had a GoFundMe, we had individual contributions, brick fundraiser, and it totaled, as you see, 41.5, and that has basically funded the first phase of the project to date. Second phase, it shows the additional costs that we have right now to go towards, basically what we have left. And these are, again, these are approximate, you know, with pricing of lumber, copper, things of that nature, it's difficult to nail it down, but it's a pretty good approximation. So the total cost of the building, again, which we've about half-funded right now, is And with that, I'll turn the rest of it over to Paxtonia, to Mr. Von Desco.
Yep. So thank you, real quick. So there are a couple other things, as we expect that, because of uniqueness of this facility, it's going to help us continue to grow our organization. Right now, we, in the spring season, we have somewhere between 250 and 300 participants in both softball and baseball. But with that, we've got some aged equipment, aged facilities that we need to take care of. And even though that, the complex is owned by the school district, we're self-sustaining, right? And we do lease the grounds for free from Lower Paxton Township, but we take care of everything there. So with that, in order to keep, we're going to need a place for some equipment, because we expect that we're going to need to store some stuff outside of the clubhouse, so we're estimating $3,000 for a new shed, utility vehicle. We have a gator that we use to drag the field. I think it was probably the first edition of the vehicle that was ever made, and it's getting up there in age, and we're living on borrowed time with that. Also at our complex, we've got some existing roofs at our concession stand, major and minor, as well as rookie fields that are in need of repair. Estimate for those costs will be $10,000. And for our minor softball and rookie baseball fields, some field regrating. That area there gets a lot of rain, a lot of washout, so that's some costs that we're anticipating on taking on to help make those fields better for those players at those levels. So we estimate that total is $30,000. In addition to Phase Two, that's how we arrived at the $75,000. So I think that may be the last slide. Any questions?
You still have the brick fundraiser?
We had, there's, we may have it eventually, again, another secondary one, but we had to cut it off at some point, because we actually started laying the bricks right now.
Okay, right.
And I wanted to add, too, when we put this up for the board, this is back in March, Central Dolphin School Board, you know, they nine-nothing vote on it unanimously. Had opening day ceremony for Paxtonia this past April, when a couple of the county commissioners came in, and they impressed as well with what we did with it, so. It's an emotional thing for me, first and foremost, and it's still, you know, it is, but it would make Zach very happy to see this going away.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another baseball request, this from the Lingelstown Baseball Association,
Thank you. My name is Bob Chernikoff. I'm the Secretary of the Board of Lingelstown Baseball Association. With me is, much to his dismay, the acting president and vice president, because he thought he was only signing up to be vice president this year. Those of you at the board aware, sometimes you went up with other jobs. We were before you, two years ago, in 2020, for the first part of what we were attempting to do to upgrade the facility. By way of background, Lingelstown Baseball Association, I'm not going to compete with Paxtonia, we compete enough on the ball field and in other ways. We run our leagues at Coons Park, which is a township facility, a very large township facility. We have in excess of 400 kids per year. We've been in operation since the 1950s, and we've probably had thousands of kids come through our programs, and many of them, I've been doing this for 25 years now, involved with the Association. It's great to see some of them come back and, you know, grown up, all grown up, and giving me a hug and saying, "How you doing, Coach?" That's probably one of the neatest things I've done. Two years ago, when we were here, we asked for money for both fencing for two of the fields, actually three of the fields, and for dugouts. You were gracious enough to recommend us. The county gave us money, we were able to do two of the fields, the largest field there, which we call the Teener Field, which actually goes up through American Legion, and Adult Baseball. And we also did what we call the Rookie Field, which is a field for six- and seven-year-olds. The township was great, and joined in this year, and we actually were able to do a third field, which is the Pony Field, for fencing. So we've got new fencing on three of the fields there. If you haven't been out there, it looks great. We maintain everything there ourselves. We do all the grounds maintenance, we do all the fixing, we do all the cutting. Fortunately, we have volunteers that are out there all the time doing that. We put a lot of effort into maintaining our infield and outfield. We like to think that they're among the finest around. When we asked for the dugouts last year, we did this in hopes we could get it, or last, two years ago, hopes that we could get it all funded. Unfortunately, there just wasn't enough, and it was also COVID times, and money was tight from the gaming grants. We're back now asking for dugouts. We have, three of the fields need dugouts. The Teener Field dugouts were probably started in 1957. They're old. We've put them together, we've maintained them, we've patched them. One of these times, they may come tumbling down under the weight of a snowstorm or something. The, excuse me, the Rookie Field is a field we took over, was a softball field. We've put in a whole new infield there, we've really done some work. We now have the fencing, which is backstops, et cetera, but they really have no dugouts. And the Pony Field dugouts were probably done 30, 40 years ago, and they're falling down in certain respects, so we keep patching them. It's in part a safety issue. When storms come, we're in the summertime, lightning comes, we have nowhere to go. I mean, especially the younger kids, they're out there in a field, six- and seven-year-olds, they're out there in a field with no shelter. They're going to get, you know, as soon as we see lightning, baseball league rule, everybody, everybody off the field, but we have nowhere to go. I mean, the midget clubhouse for these young kids is across a whole other field. And while they're not falling down, we want, don't, we don't want you to condemn them. They need to be done. We've put together some numbers on this. Unfortunately, since we last asked for the money for this, costs have gone up a considerable amount. Township has requirements that we're going to meet on that. Remember, this is a township park, we're helping fix the parks. While we maintain them, the fields are open for anyone to use. Obviously, we have first rights during the season. Our season starts in March and it goes through November. We have fall baseball and spring and summer. The costs have gone up, and they have to be block, and they have to be a certain type of roof. And we've got quotes on that, and it's all but $120,000 for six dugouts. We really would like to get this done, really spruce up the park. We try hard to do what we can to have as much play there as we can. We really believe that it would help the community a great deal. We're also putting in probably $20,000 in volunteer labor and additional costs. We're going to do all the landscaping around, all the eventual cleanup. We have to put, we'll have to put new stone out and grass and et cetera, and spruce it up and make it look good. I know the township's worked hard, and you did some work around the bathrooms there and around the volleyball courts, and I'm not sure, but I think it's, if not the largest, it's certainly the most used park, I would think, in Lower Paxton Township. It's great to see four baseball games going on, softball games, volleyball, summer basketball. It's really great to see that. So we're asking for your help. We hope that you give us a good ranking again, as you did last time. It's tough to compete, I mean, there's a lot of great community things here, and I'm definitely not, as I said, competing with Paxtonia. We have enough trouble with that. This area is great for youth baseball, and as I said, watching these kids grow up and going on to a lot of great things, I would like to think, and I know that most of them consider their times worth playing for us as some of the best times they had as kids. Open for questions.
I will say this, I hope either Lingelstown or Paxtonia develop some real good talent and sends it to the Pirates, because they really need it. And many of your teams might be able to beat the Pirates at the moment.
Well, I'll reserve comment on that.
Yeah, reserve comment. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go to the Colonial Park United Church of Christ Security Camera
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. My name is Barbara Kirk. I'm Council President of Colonial Park United Church of Christ this year, and we're asking for $20,000 towards security cameras. There's a picture of our church. It's right at the corner, well, next to Best Buy, on Devonshire Road and Jonestown Road. We have a building that we use for the community. We have a large, it's 40,000 square feet. We're in the middle of some maintenance and capital campaign to, we replaced the windows, we had to fix a brick wall that was coming apart from the cinder blocks, so we spent a lot of money fixing that. We're fixing the drain fields, so we're putting a lot of money into the building. We have a labyrinth that's used by the community, and we want to be a welcoming place for all people. The next slide shows what we've done so far in the building, so this is all what we've contributed. We serve, next slide, please. So we serve a variety of groups. We have a large AA meeting that we, meets there every week. We have a preschool called Half Day Play that runs during the school year. We host two Girl Scouts groups in the classrooms. We're a distribution center for Meals on Wheels. The women's chorus rehearses there, we have community concerts occasionally. We're a meeting place for the church softball team, and we hosted a refugee family until last fall, when they were able to move out and be on their own. So we have a lot of community things going on. We even have a little food pantry called the Blessing Box, and it's there accessible 24/7 for our neighbors who are in need of additional food. You see on the next slide that we serve over 900 people during the year, so that comes about 2% of the Lower Paxton Township population, which I think is pretty good. And the next picture, this just gives you a feel for the people and the use of the building. This was a picture of the Devonshire Fair one year. People line up to wait to go into the, to go to the thrift shop and the meals. The next slide is the back door, people even line up at the back door to go in. There's a very nice gathering room for dinners and events of all kinds, with a commercial kitchen. We have some good cooks, too. There's a stage for play rehearsals, and actually, one group we're hosting this fall is called the Play Authors Association of Pennsylvania, something like that, POP, it's acronym. So it's a group of people that actually write short plays and produce them for the community, and they're going to be using our stage and area this coming fall. The Lower Paxton Variety Band, who doesn't know Mr. Millbrand, you know? And then the next slide, you can see, actually, oh, there's the Blessing Box. Go to the next slide, please. So we collaborated with the local authorities. We had an active shooter training just before COVID hit, and when the Lower Paxton Township Police and Dolphin County Crisis Response Team came, they suggested that we install these security cameras. They said it would integrate with their system in the event of an emergency, they could get situational awareness and help, you know, to meet that crisis. The cost of the project is just over 20,000. I'm sure prices have gone up then, and we are willing to pay the difference, we are asking for the $20,000. So that's a picture of where the cameras will be located. The contractor we had gotten the estimate from is Johnson Controls, and they suggested this as the best layout. So you can see there's 18 cameras, eight interior and 10 exterior. The project comes with monitors, hard drives, cabling, of course, and a cellphone app, so you can track it in real time on your cellphone. And like I said, it integrates with the Dolphin County Crisis Response Team system, so they would have knowledge. would have knowledge. So it's important to us in this day and age when we have so many children in and out of this, the building, so many community members, that we want it to be a safe place for people to come. So we're asking for $20,000, and we thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Did the, I know it's hard to keep track of all the grant programs out there. Did the state, I think, initiated one maybe two years ago for nonprofits and churches for, specifically for security? Are you guys aware of that?
No, I'm not.
Okay, and that doesn't mean anything other than I just wanted to see if you're aware of it and something to look into in the future if you, if you need it.
You said that was a state program?
Yeah.
Okay. Good to know, thank you.
Nonprofit security program, something like that.
Okay.
Mr. Navarro, any questions? No. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're going to hear from the Panther Ram Foundation on the NutriPAC
Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Pam Jones, and I am the Director of the Central Dolphin School District's NutriPACs Program. NutriPACs is a weekend food distribution for students in the school district who need nutritious food on the weekends. The program began in 2010 and has been serving over 400 students every week during the school year. Each week, the students receive a large bag of food, milk, eggs, and produce. Each bag contains breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snacks for the weekend. Parents pick up the packs at one of our nine locations in the school district. Our program is a project of the Panther Ram Foundation, and we are a 501(c)(3). We operate with an advisory board of 10 people. Over 200 volunteers work throughout the year to distribute the food. The volunteers do everything. They do the ordering, the bagging, the delivery, the distribution, and anything else that is needed to make this program run. We are completely 100% volunteer, we have no paid staff. Our funding comes from grants, churches, community groups, and individual donors. In past years, the Dolphin County Grant has helped us to serve every student that needed food. 100% of this grant will go to purchase food. We leverage these funds by purchasing our food from the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank. This past school year, we had several requests from school counselors and school social workers from Infinity Charter School, which is located within the Central Dolphin area, Dolphin County Tech School, and both East High and CD High. At the time, we were only serving students in the elementary and middle schools. After careful planning of our finances, we agreed to add these students to our program. So this fall, we will be offering NutriPACs now to a total of 22 schools. Only two years ago, we were only serving 13 schools. In addition, we had several requests for food distribution over the summer months. Hunger does not end when the school year ends. We are now, for the first time, distributing food for 10 weeks over the summer. We are providing 25-pound boxes of nutritious food along with milk, eggs, and bread. This is a big task for the advisory board to take on, but we are prepared and we're planning for the expansion of this program. Our new summer program will help to alleviate food insecurity and financial stress during the summer months when the children are at home. We are requesting for funding of $50,000. Our community has spoken, and we are listening. We are improving the quality of life, and we're having a positive effect on the health of our local community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions? Program is very familiar to us, and thank you for expanding it even more, that's very impressive.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. And we now need to hear a presentation from the Capital Area Soccer Association, CASA. Anybody here? Okay. Not seeing anybody here from CASA. We have information on their request? There, yeah. Okay, well, that being the case, we will rely on the printed and visual material that they sent us. Thank you all for being here, we greatly appreciate it, and the board will do a ranking, will each rank each of the proposals, and Mr. Gottschall will accumulate them, and then we will pass that ranking along to the county, which, as you know, the county makes the final decision. So thank you all. The board now needs to pass Resolution 2022-20, this involving termination of a financial swap. Mr. Gottschall and Mr. Miller, do you wish to, Mr. Miller?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, thank you. In relation to the agreement for you tonight for Resolution 22-20, in simple status point, it really just gives the management team of the township the ability to work with PFM Swap Advisors, who we recently appointed to assist us with navigating our outstanding swap agreement, in the event that an early termination of that swap would be beneficial for the township. So this essentially gives us the authorization to do so when advised.
And the time may be near at hand. So this is an appropriate and timely matter. We have discussed this many, many times, but, gentlemen, do you have any questions?
No.
No. In which case, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-20?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve Resolution 22-20 regarding the Lower Paxton Township 2022 swap termination as outlined.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Subdivision and land development improvement guarantee, guarantee, of which there is one. Nothing unusual with that. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the improvement guarantee for 6206 Parkway East Extension.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Board members, Manager Gottschall, anybody have any announcements that you would like to make?
No, sir.
Other than the fact that we hope everybody is observing Flag Day today, that's a holiday in Pennsylvania. With that, our next board meeting will be a business meeting one week from tonight. It will be Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM in this meeting room. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.